The minutes of our March 12th meeting have been distributed. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Not hearing any, do I have a motion to approve?
No movement.
First by Mr. Buck Roberts, second by Dr. Thompson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes of March 12th passing unanimously. We have one item of old business and that item is request second reading of ordinance eighteen dash zero three authorizing the lease of real property generally known as Cathcart Field. Ms. McCollum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask Mr. McHuen, who dealt with this issue at the last meeting, if he would bring you up to speed on tonight's second reading.
Mayor and council, this is second reading of ordinance to lease property that's owned by the city at 119 C Street. It was previously owned by Avenue Mills. Crossover Community Church wishes to lease the property on a long-term basis to host sport ministries and family outings and community activities. The city hasn't programmed for this location in quite a while since the county sports and recreation complex, our partnership with that, and also our own recreation fields. Staff believes that this will be a benefit to not only the neighborhood by assisting Crossover Community Church and providing their community services and relieving the city from maintaining the property. As you can remember from last council meeting, Ashley Mullen with the Parks and Recreation Department stated that we are out there three or four times a week doing maintenance on it, so still quite a bit of maintenance even though we have little yet at the property. There was a couple of things that the council had questions on last time that were in the lease agreement, so we did add some clarification to that. One question was, would the city still have the ability to use the field? So we did add in under section two B that the city still can use the field upon just providing notice to the leasing, and that's just for coordination purposes. And also, we talked about last meeting, that any improvements done to the property would still be owned by the city. The city could also make improvements to the property. One of the questions that was asked as well is what was in the, identified in the Recreation Master Plan for improvements to the property. There was just some general things, including general beautification, fence maintenance, installing new bleachers, cleaning the duck out, improving that, ability to add a, enhance parking area, just a couple of other things there. So, you know, nothing there is preventing us in this lease from also making those improvements. We can do that at any time, we'll still own them, any improvements that they do, we'll also own. So, we think it's a good benefit. Again, we'll still be able to use the property and it provides enhanced use by Crossover Community Church using it on a regular basis and maintaining it for us. With that, the staff recommends that we move forward on second reading to lease this property to Crossover Community Church.
Thank you. Do we have any comments in between the first and the second read? Public comments?
Mayor, we haven't received any comments.
Thank you. Any questions? Ms. Stewart?
I know it talks about in the lease, about the renewal period is, the leasing can renew this for an additional two leases for a period of five years, but where does it state in the lease agreement what the initial lease is at? It does not state anywhere what the initial term is.
Yes, if you go to the section IV, the very last before the signature, it says renewal. So it says two additional leases for a period of five years each on the same terms and conditions.
Okay, that's two additional periods after the initial lease. Well, what is the initial lease? Is it ten years, five years? Do we need to spell out what the initial lease term is?
No, you don't, you won't need to because there's a blank to just fill in. I see your point, but there's a, on the third paragraph, it says the term commencing blank and ending blank, and so it, we'll just fill that in, it'll be for a period of five years.
Yeah, because I know most leases that I see, you know, even though you may have additional renewal periods of five years, where the initial term may be for a ten-year term, that, and then you may have two five-year renewable terms after that, and this doesn't say anything about what the initial term was, so.
Correct, good question.
And so, and then the second question is under F, under insurance. I know it says that the city is going to provide property insurance, pay for insurance, and they are as well. Do we do this like on the Tuxaway Ball Field as well? Do we, do we still carry insurance down there as long as?
Yes, we always schedule all our city properties, just, it's additional protection, liability protection, doesn't cost as much, but in this case, since they'll also be using the field, they need to have their own insurance and to hold us harmless for the activities that are being conducted there.
Ms. Mayor. Ms. Lockhart?
When, when does the lease begin, exactly?
Well, it will begin upon your approval tonight.
Okay, without approval tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay. In that case, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this.
Second?
First and a second, Ms. Lockhart, Ms. Thompson. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously on the second and final reading. We have five items of new business, and our first item is request consideration, a referral to the Planning Commission, a request to amend language in section seven point five of the Central Business District of the City of Anderson zoning ordinance. Ms. McCollum?
Mr. Mayor and council, we certainly have a zoning ordinance that describes the activities or permitted uses that are within every zoning district that we have within the city, and from time to time, we find it necessary to revise the ordinance. We do have, in this particular case, in the Central Business District, we are moving forward to remove the language from the Central Business District regulations that have a church, temple, synagogue, or other place of worship as a conditional use, and it would add it as a permitted use. As you all know, this is really kind of the start of the public process as far as your zoning ordinance is concerned, and so it will go as a referral to the Planning Commission on April the third, and we would certainly recommend that you go ahead and forward this to the Planning Commission for their review.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to...
I ask a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What's the difference then in the conditional and the permitted?
Condition, if it's a conditional use, which we have those throughout your zoning ordinance, but it means there's some extra regulation or stipulation attached to that use. In this case, the conditional use had to do with the size of the property, how much acreage you were required to have, and there may have been other conditions as well. This would remove it as a conditional use and just make it as an outright permitted use within the Central Business District. So it's not anything that's unusual. Again, I would venture to say practically every zoning district that we have may have outright permitted uses, but then they may also have some uses which would have a condition attached to it.
Good question. Any other questions?
This would mean for every quest, it's just...
This is just for churches, places of worship, and it's just pertaining to the Central Business District.
Ms. Harbin?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we refer this to the Planning Commission.
First, Ms. Harbin.
Second.
Second by the mayor pro temp. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously to the Planning Commission. Our next item is a Planning Commission related to, is a request to consider a referral to the Commission, a petition to annex in zone seventeen oh nine, South Murray Avenue Extension to R five, single-family residential. Ms. McCollum?
This is a, both of these properties, seventeen oh nine and seventeen oh six, South Murray Avenue Extension, are actually located on the old radius, our initial, our original city boundary line, so it's still kind of a curve down on the southern end of the city. These are, seventeen oh nine is a single-family residential structure. I think in both of these cases, the city benefits is what the petitioners are looking to be able to take advantage of. They likely see their neighbors getting the benefit of city services and would like to take advantage of that opportunity themselves. Again, this referral starts the public process and would go to the Planning Commission on April the third, and we suggest moving this forward through the process.
Thank you. Question, Ms. Stewart?
Where, where exactly are these structures at?
If you go on Murray, go down Murray Avenue, and when you get to the place in the road where you can veer left, if you're headed south out of town, you can veer left and go on South Murray Extension, it's right down that extension. They're on opposite sides of the street, two houses just across the street from one another.
Near Cart Swable where the Ball Field is at?
It's not quite that far, it's close to Ellison Street, it would be the next cross street.
And these are in the county right now?
They, they are, right on the edge of our city limits.
And what abuts, what, what do we have that abuts as in the city?
Other, other single-family houses.
And whose district are these in?
Dr. Thompson.
I thought so.
Getting those. Because they're on opposite sides of the street, so I know Murray Avenue runs both ways, so that's not a question I have.
All right, any thing else?
Something that is going to improve that area.
It, it's just two, two houses right across the street from one another, but again, I think what they're looking for is the benefit of our services, you know, police, fire, sanitation, I think that's, that's probably what's driving the request.
Insurance rates.
Yes, and, and they're, because...
There are a lot of benefits to living in the city.
There's no doubt about that, and because it is their single-family in use now, and because of the lot size, they, they are consistent with zoning that, that is in the city currently now. There's nothing...
Is anybody in the house, in those areas? Is anyone living in those?
They're occupied, yes, yes.
They are occupied?
Yes, yes.
You want two different motions, please?
I would suggest we do them together, since they're...
I make a motion, we refer seventeen oh six and seventeen oh nine, South Murray Avenue Extension, refer that to the Planning Commission.
First and a second. Further discussion? Who did, who did second?
Rick.
Margaret. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Those pass unanimously to the Planning Commission. Our fourth item of new business, request consideration of a demolition contract to delish eighteen substandard dwellings. Ms. McCollum?
We have Erica Kraft and Maurice McKenzie are both with us this evening, and they've, they've been kind of handling this process together. As you all know, we look for opportunities to improve our neighborhoods with the use of our funding mechanisms, our CDBG dollars and other dollars, in order to really look in our redevelopment areas and also our focus area neighborhoods. What our staff did was kind of canvassed the neighborhoods in these particular redevelopment area, areas and the fans, and sent letters to people asking if they were interested in signing a consent form to demolish some of these houses that are in blighted conditions. We have eighteen properties that we bring to you this evening that are recommended for demolition and clearance and for which we have signed consent orders. We've received bids, advertised and received bids from Miller Construction Company in the amount of a hundred and one thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars, and Phillips Recoveries out of Pelzer for one hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred dollars. We would utilize our CDBG award to fund the demolition cost. As you know, we, back in February, we had eight houses that we brought to you for demolition, so once again, this is a process that we think is valuable for us, it's a good use of our dollars to help improve conditions in our neighborhoods. If you have any additional questions, I'll be happy to read the addresses of those properties. Six fifteen West Reed Street, two eleven L Street, eleven fourteen White Street, four oh six Dickens Avenue, four twenty seven Gray Street, six oh four South Fant A and B Street, excuse me, six oh four A and B South Fant Street, sixteen oh three South Fant Street, fourteen ten West Whitner, eight fifty Dora Drive, one twelve Norris Street, thirteen thirteen South Towers, three oh two Morris Lane, one sixteen Bailey Street, actually has two structures on that, at that address, six oh two East Market Street, fourteen oh three Watson Street, eight oh six South Fant, and there are two structures located there as well. So for, the recommendation from the staff is to demolish these eighteen properties for demolition and clearance and to award that contract to Miller's Construction in the amount of one hundred and one thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars.
Thank you. I, I guess, one question I would ask, maybe it's to Erica, how many work hours does it take to do eighteen of one house?
Well, this process, we're hoping that this process will be there for maybe forty-five, ninety days tops. Federal funds, government block grant, will not have quite the level of paperwork that we've had to plead for our neighborhood initiative program grant. That program required a lot more, we had to give appraisals, we had to give, offer a fair market value because that grant purchased the property and paying those for these three years and responsible for the ongoing maintenance. So that was very labor-intensive, and it took us about right at two years to wrap that one up and have our final inspection this week.
Okay, good. Questions?
I just had, the previous slate of houses, is that the one you were talking about? But the, the previous slate that we, we did, are they down and, and removed?
The eight that we approved last month are not. We had them tested and gave the surveys back for the lead asbestos last week in all eight of them. Six is definitely known that they have asbestos, several will require air monitoring and a project design. You're going to have to wait until the demolition contractor can, some of the surfaces so that he can be further tested, but we'll have to have all of those eight made in air monitor. And following tonight's approval of these eighteen, process of doing another bid to get all of these surveys that is best...
So do they have to re-bid when they...
We're bidding them separate.
No, 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 what I'm saying is, is if you're, if we're doing the, the assessment after they bid it, the ones that we did last month, is it, same thing applies for these? Have these, do we know which ones have asbestos and had to be cleared? So their, their price or bid is based on what's actually there? Okay.
Independent of one another, with the exception that if we weren't able to fate a unit, then the demolition contractor would have to go back to DHEC and get a variance on his demolition permit so that those materials may go to the landfill that will accept asbestos and...
Okay, thank you.
No doubt, Thompson.
Erica, I think you're saying that, I understand that, that even though these houses will be demolished, the property will still be the owner's, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And the owners will have to maintain that lot even though the house is gone?
Yes, and pay the taxes.
And pay the, and pay the taxes? Taxes would be on the, on the property?
Just the land, after it's cleared, yes.
Uh huh, okay. So I think we need to be thinking about what in the world we're going to do with those lots that are left there. Some are buildable and some are not.
Right, but these we will not own. These will differ, the ones that we acquired with...
I know, we want to own them, but they'll still be there?
Oh, yes.
For us to look at and decide. And these are, I guess, between most, majority, I would say, between seat four and five, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Not a question, just, just a comment. You know, and I'm very grateful, you know, in years past, you know, this council has always allocated about a hundred thousand dollars a year towards demolition to help eliminate the slum and blight, but this year, you know, we've been lucky to get a couple hundred thousand dollars through the federal government, through CDBG to, to tackle this, which is allowing us to do more than what normally, you know, that we've been able to do in the past. And, but even though we tear down houses every year, there's ten or fifteen more pop up the next year. And so, I would just like this council to, you know, keep in the back of their minds that while we've had a standing commitment that we've always taken a thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars of our general fund to help with this demolition, I would like to see us to continue with that commitment again come the new fiscal year, because with this federal money and with the council's commitment, we could get a real big jumpstart on what our demolition is out here in our neighborhoods. So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this contract.
Second? First by Ms. Stewart, second by Dr. Thompson. Any further discussion, Ms. Harbin?
How many, do you have an idea of how many houses we've torn down?
Yes, since two thousand and six, we've demolished four hundred and ninety-nine houses, and that doesn't include the eight that we approved in February, nor does it include these eighteen. So we'll be over the, over the five hundred mark, and as Mr. Stewart indicated, because we are an older city and our housing stock is, is getting older, then we do face this challenge every year. The more, we, we certainly have made good progress in the demolition, but it doesn't mean that the, the blight goes away. So it's certainly something we're very aware of, but we're very grateful to be able to have this type of progress made annually.
I agree. And it's an upstate problem, it's a state problem.
It is.
I mean, you look at some of the initiatives, to Tony's point, the focus, for example, in Greenville County with a, a, a bigger commitment, they have a bigger issue than we do because they're just geographically they're bigger than us, but it will continue to be a problem. About first and second, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Passes unanimously, Erica has the last word.
As matter, I'd like to invite you all to our upcoming celebration, our event that we showcase the projects that we've done in the neighborhoods that we've been working. We're going to have that on next Friday, April the sixth, we're opening doors with a showcase of the projects and brunch, invite the public as well as you all to join us.
Thank you.
Have some flyers.
Would that be a tour?
I'm trying to arrange it. Physically go through it, because if not, we have a slideshow of the area.
Good, thank you. Our last item of new business is request consideration to purchase equipment for the wastewater department. Ms. McCollum?
This may seem like a, a little bit of old business to you because it's been before you in different forms previously, but you will remember back in twenty sixteen in September, we entered into a lease purchase agreement to buy new and used vehicles and equipment for the wastewater department, and we've steadily, this is why I say it may sound a bit like we're repeating ourselves, but we've little by little been tackling that acquisition of the vehicles and equipment to keep our wastewater department on track to do all of those inspections as we are required to do by the state and federal government. I'd like to ask Jeff if he'd come up and share some of the details about what we've purchased in the past, but more specifically, what we're asking for your authorization for this evening.
Ma'am, yeah, so hopefully you'll remember some of this as we go through it, but as the background says, in September two thousand and sixteen, it approved this ordinance that totaled about eight hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment. It was a combination of new equipment and old equip, and used equipment. We came back again several, several months later, and you gave approval for several pieces of new equipment, some trucks, skid steer, backhoe, things like that. Then we went out looking for the used equipment, and you may recall, we came back and asked you to go ahead and give us the authority to work within that budget and not have to bring that used equipment back one at a time. The vendors were having a hard time, or we were having a hard time getting the vendors just to hold on to that equipment and not sell it out for money in the time it would take us to get on the agenda and get approvals and get back. So you gave us that approval, and through that, we purchased an excavator, a used excavator, a used loader, and we had planned to purchase a used dump truck, a smaller used dump truck. We did purchase a used large dump truck. We had planned to purchase a smaller dump truck used and a used bush hog tractor. We did see some significant savings through that process, so that's what's allowing us to go after this new equipment tonight. So we do feel like we'll get a better level of service, a longer life through, through this newer equipment. We did get three bids on the dump truck. The low bid is from Worldwide Equipment out of West Columbia for ninety-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars plus tax. What's great about that one is it's built and on the lot, so we can take possession of that very soon. The bush hog tractor will, will have to be built, I believe, but is from local, old stone tractor, and the low bid on that one was forty-seven thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars. So out of the, around a hundred and ninety-seven dollars, a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars that we have left in that, this will complete about a hundred and forty thousand of that, a hundred and forty-five thousand of that. And the benefit, we'll get a full warranty, we feel like we'll get a longer life. This will, this will complete those list of items that we originally intended to purchase. So with that, we're, we are recommending approval of the dump truck and the bush hog from those low bidders.
Thanks, sir. Any questions, comments?
Mayor, or Jeff, so out of the total allocated budget, we're going to come in under about sixty thousand?
About fifty, yeah.
About fifty thousand.
We're in that range. What we're, what we're looking for, I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead.
Yeah, what, what we're going to be looking for now is, there is some equipment that makes our regulatory requirements a little easier on us. There's some advances in technology as far as assessing sewer, new techniques, new equipment, and we're going to be pursuing some of that with our savings, and also equipping our camera truck and trailer to be more useful in the field.
That, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve that and, and don't forget, you can always turn back in the fifty thousand, and Linda can figure out a way to spend it if, if we need to.
First by Mr. Harbin, second by the mayor pro temp. Further discussion?
Yeah, that would be the old adage of Curvin, if you give it, they will spend it.
All those in favor, say aye.
With the agreement, with the lease agreement, if something goes wrong with this new equipment, right, they will take care of it?
Well, Dr. Thompson, this, when we talk about a lease purchase agreement, it's essentially a financing mechanism, we're not actually leasing the equipment like we're accustomed to using the term lease, so, so our eight hundred thousand dollars of equipment was actually in, we're, that is money that was authorized to, essentially loaned to us, so you're paying debt service for the benefit of using these dollars to get your wastewater division up to speed to meet all these requirements. So in this case, I don't mean to disappoint you, but we're not actually turning money back in, we're spending the dollars or utilizing those dollars in a financial arrangement to meet our CMOM requirements. So that's, if you remember, that's everything from the six hundred and forty manholes that we've got to inspect annually to the twenty-seven miles of sewer lines that we have to inspect annually and everything that goes with it in between. So, so yes, we will likely be coming back to you to spend the rest, that rest of that fifty thousand dollars.
Mayor, I have one question too.
Yes.
How is the used equipment holding up?
It's good. I mean, we, we've not had it a long time, but I mean, we, we feel like we...
We didn't get it...
We did our due diligence to get a good piece of equipment and...
Was not totally beaten up?
No, 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 we, we did, we did a good job.
New use.
CMOM requires us to spend all the money.
Well, our lease purchase agreement does because, yes, yes, so it's, it's, that's a different financial mechanism.
Maybe we can remind everyone that it's federally mandated and unfunded.
Yes, always federally mandated and unfunded.
And unfunded.
And unfunded.
The unfunded part is the part we don't like.
Anybody opposed to this? It passes unanimously? Thank you, Jeff. I do notice the council always has a longstanding tradition of recognizing horse scouts. I do notice the council always has a longstanding tradition of recognizing horse scouts. You must be one. Tell us what troop you're representing and who you are. You have a project? Thank you. Yeah, working on Eagle Scout too, right?
Yes.
Great.
Miss Keen, AU.
Yes.
Miss Keen.
Miss Keen.
Aren't you working on a project?
Oh.
Some familiar faces out there in the audience that I'd like you to recognize. I saw a retired guy over there, Ulysses. I saw others.
Good evening, everybody. Here to listen in on the city. I had a question. Gentlemen here, does men work right? Fellas here...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it here. We'll transition to administrative briefing. Ms. McConnell?
Yes, sir. We have the chamber's annual meeting is tomorrow at lunch at the Hilton Garden Inn. It begins at 11:45. And for those of you who plan to attend, I believe we have...the chamber has lined up the president of Clemson University to be the speaker tomorrow. That really takes us through the end of March. Then in April, our city election is Tuesday, April the 3rd. The polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. We also kick April off with the beginning of the block party on April the 5th, and that gets us started into the month of April, and maybe it really will feel like spring.
I hope so.
Hope so.
Thank you.
That's all we have, Mayor, but we do have one item in executive session relative to proposed location expansion or provision of services that encourage the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area, and we would recommend moving into executive session to discuss that.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session. First by Mr. Buck Roberts, second by Mr. Lockridge. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? We stand in executive session. We're going to...
We're going to stay here.
Mr. Lockridge, second by Dr. Thompson. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? We stand in our executive session, and in executive session, we had discussion of matters relating to a proposed location expansion of division of services encouraging location of expansion of industries or other businesses in areas served by a public body. We had a briefing from the administration team on this particular matter. There will be no action taken by council at this time. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. First by Mr. Roberts, second by Mr. New. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? We stand adjourned.